Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Bladensburg Council Work Session for Monday, September 11. We will pause for a moment of silence in recognition of September 11 at the 7:00 PM council meeting, but just we know that day forever affected this nation and is very much at the forefront of our minds, and so just wanted to make that announcement. At this time, we are now called to order, and I'll call for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any comments, questions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
"I."
"I." Any "nays"? The "I's" have it. Thank you so much. The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of minutes from our July 10 work session. Is there a motion to approve?
I said move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any comments, corrections, or amendments to the minutes? I did want to ask if it's possible for staff to just insert a short sentence that's more specific about the HUD cooperation agreement, just from the standpoint that when those who come after us need to access information, they at least just have a short sentence in terms of what that agenda item was for. You know, we know because we were there. And then similarly, for the CTC proposals, we did have Mr. Shawn Thompson there, and same thing, I would just ask that there's just a short sentence to insert what his presentation was, just for future records. Any disagreements there from the council, or any difference?
No.
Okay, all right. So with those two amendments, I'll now call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
"I."
"I." Any "nays"? The "I's" have it. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm really pleased to have, again, with us the Assistant Director of Stormwater Management and Public Works. It's a long title, I'm sorry. But, sorry, Associate Director for the Department of Works and Transportation from Prince George's County, who's been a great partner to the Town of Bladensburg over the past several months as we've been discussing flood barrier mitigation options for the community. As those residents who are watching and in the room know, flooding unfortunately has challenged the Town of Bladensburg over many years, and as climate changes, the frequency of storms is increasing, but not only that, so is the severity. And we would just want to learn from some of the more recent challenges that we've had with flooding and work with the county on a proposed solution, and so that's where our angel here, Associate Director Smith, came into conversations with the town, and so we do want to turn it over to Associate Director Smith for her presentation.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good evening.
Good, thank you. All right. Thank you for the introduction. I think I'm probably going to skip the first slide because you just kind of covered that one for us. I'm glad that we actually have a little bit of sunshine. I know we had a lot of rain for the past couple of days, which is what we're here for. All right. Can you? Perfect. All right. So as Mayor James noted, one of our major concerns lately is flooding. The frequency of larger and more severe storms over the past few years have increased. We have had a few incidents in the past two to three years with severe flooding within the Town of Bladensburg. Some to note were actually back in September of 2020 and August of 2022. As you can see on the slide, we have had more frequent events that exceed over two and a half, two and a quarter inch of rain, as well as 3.9 inches of rain in the DC metro area. We are all very familiar with climate change, and as no, you know, this is not going to change. Next slide, please. This is the reason that we are here. In partnership with the town, Public Works has explored different ways to mitigate and alleviate inaccess with flooding within the Bladensburg community. One of the projects near in the area, in the northeast area, was actually a flood wall barriers that were used in the, in Big Intom, New York, to protect the hospital that you see in the picture. That project was actually implemented using FEMA grant fundings. That is one of the alternatives that we're currently exploring, is to use similar flood barriers for the Town of Bladensburg. We have identified two different locations, and that will be coming up in the next slide. The different types of barriers that we currently have are the retractable, that are actually permanent structures, and the non-retractable, that are removable barriers. For this project itself, we're trying to focus on the retractable permanent structures that will remove a lot of the human arrow issues when we don't have a lot of notifications. Next slide, please. The flood barriers. We have looked at a couple of areas in Riverdale, as well as Bladensburg, but Mayor James was so kind to work with us on this pilot. So we actually have identified two locations, thank you, in the Bladensburg area. One of them is the Quincy Run Project. It's actually a stream channel that goes behind a couple of condominiums and then over under a culvert before it gets to a concrete channel and upon on the other side. And the other one is the concrete drainage channel that is known by many as the Edmiston Channel, where that one will be located from Tusick to Spring Place. Next slide, please. Okay. Quincy Run. As you can see in the photo behind, on the slide, there is a couple of condominiums, I believe there's four of them, and then on the other side of Quincy Run, there's a couple of other apartments and private homes, single-family homes. This section of the stream, we're looking into implement barriers on either side of the stream bank, sun minor modifications to the stream valley if needed. As you can see also in the photo, this area is part of the floodplain, which creates a concern for flooding, obviously. So the length of this barrier, because we're doing barriers on either side of the stream bank, we're looking at about 3,500 linear feet, 3,560, that is being proposed. Next slide, please. All right. The flood barriers at Edmiston Channel. Like I said, this one goes from Tusick Road to Spring Road. This area was also selected because of the environmental justice score. It is in the FEMA floodplain as well. There are two major culverts on this section that we are, we're going to have to evaluate during this study to ensure that the flood wall barriers will be feasible in this area. We had a couple of areas within the 5411 Taylor and 5408 Taylor Avenue that had some grading and issues due to flooding previously. This one will be about 7,600 linear feet of barrier as well. We're looking at other barriers on other side of the channel as well. Next slide. This is just a little overall to show where the property boundaries are that we're looking at. Part of the work in the beginning of the, this process is to ensure that we can get concurrence from the community. That also means that we can get right of entries from the property owners so that we can do additional field assessment, like survey, geotechnical, utility designations, and so on, natural resources, because that's going to be part of the permitting process as this project moves along. So this area just kind of shows some of the areas of, the green areas, which are the part of Park and Planning, which we will going to require to go through permits with MNC PBC for TCPs and natural resources. And then the blue area where you see is the floodplain area, which we're going to have to go through permitting with DPI, as well as Army Corps of Engineers, if there's any triggers there during the modeling. All right. Next slide, please. All right. This one's a little difficult, just because I have to capture two, a longer section of Tusick, like I said, from Tusick Road all the way down to Spring Road. I put a legend in there to kind of give a little bit of perspective of the private ownership of homeowners and residents that we would need to be working with. Some of the areas are owned by the town, which we're going to be working with the town for right of entries. Some of the areas are owned by Park and Planning. Some of them are actually owned by the county. I think there's one little one in there. And then the other ones in red are actually private entities, homeowners, private homeowners that we will need to work with them to get right of entries to access their backyards, do survey utilities, geotechnical, and so on, to do the preliminary assessment for the project. Next slide. All right. This one kind of shows a little bit of a graphic of what to expect if we were to use the barriers. The first picture, you can see the barriers kind of, they're just lower, they kind of fall down on this one. And as the water rises, they're hydraulically activated, and the actual barriers actually come up, up to, you know, they will be designed to a certain height depending on the models and what we get for flow and water in the area. If you can go to the next slide, please. I think there is one quick little video that will show a little bit of a better picture. If you can click on that. There we go. So the, there we go. Perfect. Thank you. All right. As you can see there, since they're hydraulically activated, as the water reaches a certain point, then it reaches the hydraulic lines and the retractable barriers will come up, minimizing a lot of the error, like we said before, of having somebody installing barriers, you know, 24 hours or three hours ahead of time. Now, with this, like I said, it's a permanent structure, which also means that it is going to be very crucial for us to get that survey and the geotechnical information to know if the soils that we currently have in the area will be able to sustain a new structure. All right. Do we have also the spacing, which is also the reason why we need the right of entries to also develop the spaces and any further easement that we will need from the individual property owners. The next slide, please. That's just another picture of barriers that have been used in the areas. You can see, and normally you wouldn't see them, but once they activate it, you actually have that barrier wall protecting, you know, private properties. In this case, it was, I believe it was a shoreline or up here. Okay. Next slide. All right. So preliminary alternatives. I think this is one of the key components that we need to discuss moving forward. As I stated before, the first, we're going to focus on the flood barriers, since this is a pilot project. However, you know, noting that there will be some constraints with space and permitting, soils, strength, bearing capacity, and so on, we also need to look at additional alternatives, which is what we're going to be doing in the first phase of this project with the preliminary assessment, is identifying whether the flood barriers will work, and also identifying any other alternatives that we may have to still assist and help the communities with minimizing and mitigating flooding. Some of the items that we're looking at, just by very preliminary modeling, is maybe removal of some of the culverts that are there. For example, in Tusick Road and Spring Road, those two major culverts that we're talking about, you know, removal of those two culverts to allow for more capacity, those roadways will become, you know, one way on another end. And then there will be dead end, and then the other one will be increasing the culvert size at 52nd Avenue. That should be able to also assist with some of that flooding that we're having at Quincy Run, with potentially doing some stream restoration as well. So those are items that we're looking at and thinking through as we get closer, and the more information we can get through this preliminary assessment, which is, again, while we're here, that will help us dictate what options we have available to help the community. Next slide. All right. The other option that we were looking at also is maybe a redesign of the current channels that we have there, right? Right now, we have trapezoidal channels. If, you know, an option is to actually increase the capacity by changing the shape of the channel, that's also another option that we're going to be exploring in the process of this Phase 1 assessment. Okay. Next slide, please. All right. As I mentioned in the other slides, there is a couple of areas where we're going to have to do, go through permitting. FEMA, like I said, DPI for flooding, MNC PBC, since we're going to be working in the stream channels, working with the Department of the Environment for wetlands and waterways permit will be another one. FEMA, if we are working and reducing or increasing, or if there's any slight increases in the floodplain, that will be something else that we're going to have to go through. So there are some of the regulatory constraints per se that may affect the length of the project. Okay. Next slide, please. All right. So our next steps. So why are we here? We have been working with the community so far. This is our second or third meeting, I believe. Hopefully, we will have one more meeting in October to try to gauge the community, try to get the information out to especially all the homeowners that are going to be impacted by this project, to get the right of entry. That is key in order for us to move forward. We need to be able to get that survey, like I said, the geotechnical soil borings, testing, the utilities, so that we can actually have that information for our preliminary assessment and alternative design. One of the things that we are going to be working on is to expedite the process. Instead of doing a typical designed permit bid and then construction, we're looking into a design-build contract vehicle at this point with other firms to help expedite the project, where we'd like to get everything completed within a two-year timeframe. With that said, again, permitting will be the key component of, you know, of the timing. We're developing the budget, so this is something that we're going to be working even further in the upcoming FY '25 budget as well. We have some budget for '24, and we're working with the Town of Bladensburg with ARPA funding to get started. We're working on the MOU right now between the two jurisdictions, and hopefully, we can have a few other meetings in the upcoming months, probably in October. We will have one more meeting of this, and then start sending the information to the residents with the right of entry forms, so that we can start the process of the preliminary design. All right. Next slide, please. All right. You might have to click a couple times. Thank you. There we go. All right. So, whoop. There we go. Thank you. All right. So as I was saying earlier, the advertisement of the project, we're looking into having all the right of entries in the beginning, the first half of FY '24, which is where we are right now, and start implementing the design, for the preliminary design in the later part of FY '24. So sometime in January, February timeframe to get started with the preliminary design. Like I said, two years is the timeframe that we would like to get this project from design into implementation completed. So completion about FY '26, so somewhere between October 2025, March of 2026. All right. And then fundings, we are searching for as many grant options as possible. You know, we know that this type of project will be expensive, but we want to make sure that we are taking opportunities with the many different grant opportunities that are out there. FEMA, NOAA for flood resiliency, DNR grants, so, you know, lower the cost on the taxpayers as well. Okay. Next slide, please. All right. And local cooperation. The reason why we're here is to get as much information out to the community, to get, you know, a lot of the community members may or may not know of the project. You know, like I said, we're going to be scheduling a couple of their meetings. I believe this one is going to be recorded, so people have awareness. We have shared the presentation with the town as well, so that can be shared with the community on the website as well. And then as we progress, and once we actually have a design-build contractor in place, having multiple public meetings with the community, so they are aware and abreast of the project and how we're progressing, and want to make sure that we have full transparency. As I said earlier in the very beginning, one of the constraints is going to be the easements, right? Because if this is going to be a permanent structure, we most likely will have to go outside of what the current easement there is for the concrete structure. So I know that that's going to be one of the topics that needs to be discussed with the community as we progress through the design process. Okay. All right. I think that's the last slide before questions, if anybody has questions.
And just, not so much a question, but just an observation. Folks are just extremely busy, and it is always hard to get critical mass at the meetings. And so it was helpful going door-to-door. I know Councilmember Brown went door-to-door, I did as well, in talking to the residents, explaining the project, walking them through the brochure. And so knowing we're planning to do another presentation in October, I think we just may have to be creative in doing a little more door-knocking to get the information out to the residents, particularly knowing how important the rights of entry forms are. I don't want to have your team experience a delay, because we're waiting for people to come to us. As government, sometimes you have to take it to the people. So with that in mind, if we can be helpful in going door-to-door, at least as an introduction, leaving the forms, and some folks from your team can just follow back up, answering questions, you know, following up on the form, I think maybe we'll get more engagement, because I'm just surprised, so many people were receptive. And even folks who I had language barriers with, you know, they may have had to get a relative to translate, but when they understood why I was at their door, they were very enthusiastic about this project. So I don't want you to look in the crowd and say, "Well, we don't have 500 people here, so no one's listening." I mean, we're getting it out, it's being recorded, and again, we're here to help you go door-to-door.
And we appreciate the partnership. It has been very helpful to have the partnership with Bladensburg to help out with the notifications, and certainly, we can do that even further, maybe. I know that language barrier is one thing, so I'll work with my team to try to translate those flyers into Spanish as well, so that we can have. I know that we did a QR code on the back of those flyers too, so that they have access to an email, and I'll work with my team to see if maybe we can put like another website or something to have more information. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any questions from the team? Councilmember Brown?
Well, once again, thank you so very much, and we're definitely looking forward to this, and I know that our residents are excited as well. But to this, I just would like for you to kind of elaborate on maintenance, you know, kind of short-term, long-term, because, yeah, what that maintenance looks like with this being a pilot.
Certainly. Thank you. We are still looking into the maintenance on that. The reason why we selected the retractable one is because it will minimize the maintenance, right? So they come down, you know, they pop up. That's obviously part of the MOU that we're going to have. The county will have responsibility on the maintenance for this system, so, but we will have to look into the manufacturers, because there's a couple manufacturers that we're looking at as to what their maintenance looks like, to ensure that we're doing it correctly and implement that in the county.
And any questions from our expert staff? Concerns? Thoughts?
No, I mean, I think, Joanna, the one thing I'm just looking forward to is trying to make sure that we get this out as much as possible, and if we can, if you have any presentations or anything in the can, that we can put on our social media, put on our website. We'll add this presentation to our website as well, but we'll make sure that this gets out. If there's any more that we can do, let us know.
Okay. Yeah, I think this one will be great, because it actually has the video versus the other ones that we had before. That should give a little bit of insight to what to expect.
So we'll add to our website, and we'll also add it to our social media.
Perfect. Okay. And then last but not least, I also want to acknowledge your team, who is here with you. For residents that participate, well, were affected by the flooding in 2020, they got to see a lot of this gentleman, Mr. Charlie Griffin, because he was here for the follow-up maintenance. As we were saying, these things are clogged, as Public Works was calling it out and saying, "Okay, here's a list," and other staff members, your team was wonderful in coming back, and I do appreciate and want to acknowledge, we have seen increased frequency in terms of the maintenance of the culvers, so definitely appreciate you. And then the other gentleman who I'm proud to have here is Mr. Ryan Middleton, also with the county as well, and some of you may recognize Ryan, because he's like done everything. He's worked on the federal side, now he's on the county side, but he's just a great advocate for the community, and we really appreciate you taking the time to be here as well. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And just one thing I was going to note, you might see our team, and I'll be in touch with you, Michelle, with regards to culverts or anything that is clogged. I know that we have the potential of hurricane leak coming up through later this week, so we're actually in the process of ensuring that all our areas are clean prior to Friday.
Great. Excellent. I'm sure Mr. Hall will be checking, just to be sure.
You have my number.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. So that completes the flood barrier project update and appearances for tonight, so we'll move forward with old business, which is the Town Legislative Priorities Document that Town Administrator Michelle Bailey-Hedgepath shared with us. Mrs. Bailey-Hedgepath, did you want to just talk us through that?
Sure. Yeah. Let's start with there. So, Council, every year, we put together a set of legislative priorities to share with the delegation, both the county, the state, and actually even the federal delegation. Some of these items kind of span all of those. What I did is we sort of revised the ones that we had in regards to, that we had previously, and then updated them with where we are now. So in the land use for Bladensburg, I think that's kind of a standing issue that I think that I'm not going to necessarily go through. I didn't make a lot of changes to that. But to the small cell legislation authority, even though we are starting to execute those contracts, we still need a little bit more support on that issue. The Anacostia dredging, I was actually talking to someone about the fact that this is also a county matter, but this has been a long-term matter for all the port towns, and it may need to go up to our federal delegation, so we will start to add that to our federal delegation, so I will update the form in regards to that. With the Colobus, again, we had, we looked at an opportunity with COG, in which we can maybe look at supporting senior transportation, but really kind of making that issue more active is something that we need to talk to our county and our state delegation about. The wayfinding signage, I know that MMPPCC has been doing a lot on wayfinding, and they actually have a division that actually does placemaking. So as we, tomorrow, we're work, I'm going to a presentation on the sector plan, but I'll also talk about how we can engage with them on their placemaking unit, and they can help us with some of that wayfinding as well. We added this new one called Organized Retail Theft Assistance. An issue came up in regards to, an issue with a retailer, Save-A-Lot, and we actually think it's probably more, so we haven't heard as much from some of our other retailers, but it's something that's been happening throughout the country, and actually, the retail lobbies have actually been kind of, the different retailer lobbies have been asking for some legislation on this. So it's a county and state one. State legislation, Boswick House, always on the list. We've got about $500,000 in bond bill. What I did is add the where we are currently and what we're putting together for you. Town Hall is another state one. We have about $1 million. We're going to start to put together some RFQs this year, so that we can get some money spent, so when we go in front of our delegation, we can ask for more funding and let them know where we are on that project. The police accountability, law enforcement bill of rights last year that failed in the legislature, some of the changes. So we're kind of waiting to see, but we'd like to have the delegation to look into that. Chief, do you have anything to add that I'm not adding on law enforcement bill of rights? I mean, sorry, the police accountability is no longer called, LLBR. Do you have anything that I missed, or?
Nope. You kept.
Okay. Correct. Just one question, though, Chief, and it would be helpful, from your perspective, to know, as the chief of police, is it helpful for us to advocate for the charging, the administrative charging? charging boards at the local level? Or should we not be pressing on that? Or should it be where we share the resources and it's shared by town? So a couple of towns, police departments get together and create them, so it's not too much of a strain on smaller communities like ours?
Well, I would say that I think that we should, at this point, due to the budget constraints, I would say that we would leave this at the higher level. Because just even if we do it with the port towns, just getting a budget line set up for representation of respondent officers, that can be very costly to the town. Getting expert witnesses, that would also be a price tag that the town or the group of towns, if they participate, would have to absorb those costs. So I would say at this point, I would leave it at the high level and revisit it later.
And Mayor, you know, the interesting thing is, you know, coming from Howard County, where we did not have any municipalities and had to stand this up, just from the county standpoint and the sheriff, it was, it was sort of easy. But I always felt very sorry for Prince George's because of the fact that you have 27 different municipalities and the vast majority of policing happening in the different municipalities. And as the chief says, it is a big burden from the standpoint of an administrative charging committee. I understand that process. And at this point, given what the administrative charging committees and what the, we're going to have to do for that, it would be a burden for the town of Bladensburg to run our own. Could you have a committee that met afterwards, like most of the police accountability committees, or have a committee, a citizen action committee maybe that you talk about things? But it takes so long for those cases to go through the process. And because they are legal personnel matters, it will take about a year to a year and a half for most of these cases to be adjudicated. Is that, would that be fair?
Yes.
Chief, so that's what, that's the only caveat, is that once you have some cases, a couple of years down the road, there'll be something for citizens to look at. But immediately, we're sort of in a wait and see until these cases are put forward and how the administrative charging committee runs through those. And the other part of the administrative charging committee, they have specific guidelines of how they charge based on state, based on what came from the Maryland Training Police Commission in regards to how that's put together. So it is a complex process, and it takes a lot of training. And I just, I attended part of the training with the ACC in Howard County. And it is very intense, what people go through. So when you're, when you have to multiply that times the 27 municipalities, it would be a lot.
Yeah, if I can just add, serving on the police chiefs of Prince George's County Association Board, as the town administrator stated, with 24 municipalities operating, a lot of them, the majority of them, they cannot withstand this. So they would have to leave it at the high level because of the cost that it would cost administrative judges, expert witnesses. All of that is, the burden is on the jurisdiction to fund that.
So, so for right now, we're asking for more, I think, but from the standpoint of legislation, though, we'd like to see more transparency for our residents. And if there are opportunities for that, we'll continue to ask for that as part of our legislative package, if that makes sense. So the trail system is the next one that's on here. And I think this is an ongoing one that we've had in regards to taking advantage of trails and actually just trying to make sure that we link up to other trails throughout the community. The Bladensburg Community Center, seeing that expanded, was another one that you always had on there. And we've got that back on there. The Peace Cross Traffic Management Plan, again, is on the list. And I know that's a longstanding issue for the town, so we're, we have that on there.
Just one point on that, though. So they did, instead of doing the guard rail, they put the little soldiers in front of it to protect it. So there, it has been working. Sadly, there have been some recent incidents of people running up and nearly hitting it. So that part, we can at least say, mission accomplished there. But still, on the traffic plan, we still need work there.
Yeah, still need some work. So I know that that's something that we're going to keep and keep going to try to get that in there. The MBE weatherization funding, again, we, as part of today's grant, I mean, part of today's agenda, we will be looking at how to better utilize a grant writer to help us to get to that. But just advocating more for it is what that is. Same thing with homeowners assistance, with the ending of ARPA, we still see this need for housing and affordable housing, and we're watching rental housing go up. So that's something where we need some homeowner assistance. Again, organized retail theft, and I mentioned that before. We talked about the economic development opportunities as far as a facade improvement program, from the standpoint of businesses and from that standpoint. Port towns redevelopment, from my meetings with the other port town managers, we're going to start meeting on this, especially as part of our sustainability plan. But also from the standpoint of the fact that that agency is looking like it might come back together again. So what's the town want to do with that? Small business growth is another one of the issues. And again, we have an economic development coordinator, I mean, excellent, coming on board. So that's something that we're going to actually ask them to help us to work through a little bit more as we work with the delegation. And the last one is this quality of life. It's one of the sumorphous things that everybody, that we, we all would like, a better quality of life. And how do we do that? And working with the legislature, both state, local, and federal to improve that. So that's what we have so far, Mayor Council. And just wanting to check in to see if we missed anything, or if there's things that we need to add.
Yeah, so I'll jump in unless, councilmembers, you have some questions. Okay, so just going back to the top of the list and working my way through. So with the small cell legislation, so as we know, all we can really do with these applications are approve them. We do have jurisdictional authority to determine placement of the towers. But really beyond that, I just don't see the county coming back and saying, hey, Bladensburg, you can make the decision to not have these. We can't, there are so many things that we can't cite. You can't cite health issues, you can't cite sound, you can't cite all these things. So basically, we're being told that we have to allow these in our communities. So I'm just wondering, is there really a legislative ask here, or should we take it off? Because my question is, what exactly are we going to be asking for policy for?
Not to put them around apartment buildings or homes, but to put them off the streets. Because that was the owner at Emerson House, he took down a lot of that stuff so that he would not have the sale. Emerson House. So that's the only thing I could think of, not having them around apartment buildings.
Yeah, and that is within our authority, because it's within the town. So we can say these are the rules for where they can be. So away from homes and residential, only in commercial areas, that we can do. And so that, I feel like that box is checked. But what we don't have the ability to do is say we don't want it, you know, or anything else. So that's why I'm saying, does this really need to stay on? Right, it's here. So do we remove it, or is there a substantive reason to keep it on here?
I mean, I should say, since we have a lot, and we can eliminate one or two, that would probably be good. So I think that what you're saying makes a lot of sense. Only if the fact that we have to ask, could we do 150 or 200 feet, that could be the only check. And I can check in with our town attorney.
Okay.
If there's any kind of legislative, like if there are any minor fixes that we could ask for. But I will check in with her. But I believe that it could be removed if there aren't anything minor that the county can allow us to do.
Okay. So is everyone comfortable with that? If we can't put in the criteria in terms of the distances and so forth, then we just remove it. Okay. And then with the Anacostia dredging, just wanted to call out, that's definitely going to be a federal legislative ask, just given we have to further engage the Army Corps of Engineers. So while county and working with DOE is a piece of it, I think it's been, it's been at least a decade since we pushed on federal side for money. So it's time to go for a big ask there. And you guys tell me, you know, or if maybe we just send your thoughts via email, what the dollar amount is. But I do think, like, we need to push hard on that from a federal perspective. And I think what would help us too, is if we could get a joint letter from the port towns to our delegation, letting them know, similar to what we talked about before, Michelle, just summarizing the asks, and this is where you can help us.
Yep, we can do that. And again, Mayor Council, you are, there is a port towns meeting in the next week. So it does come in the right timing between all of you. So what we can do is we can also reiterate our ones and say, hey, these are common. And I can share that with the other managers. And then we can say, these are our common ones, and then get letters from all the towns to support.
Okay. All right. And then with respect to call-a-bus, Councilmember Blunt, I just didn't know if this is something that really is a legislative ask, or as much as it's just something we're continuing to work on. Like, are we asking for a law to be changed about call-a-bus?
I mean, the way it's ran, yeah, I'm sorry. The way it's ran, yes. Put the change there, and I think it wouldn't be as, I don't know, because still got to pay salaries. So I'm still for it. But again, I think some changes should be made.
With the overall program?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And we could talk about, we also can then talk about funding and how that's subsidized too, if there's any other types of funding to, to.
To help pay.
Okay.
I think it was at one time.
Yeah.
It was funding for that at one time, but.
Do you remember if that was from the county?
I think it was from the county.
Yeah, the county used to.
The county call-a-bus system?
Mm-hmm.
Because we used to use their bus. They used to provide the buses. And then the towns would then pay for the drivers.
Okay. And then on the wayfinding signage, I think that makes absolute sense. Any input from the council on that? I feel like it's straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay. With the organized retail theft legislation, I wanted to see if Chief, you could just enlighten the community a little bit more here. Because from the meeting we had with the Save-A-Lot owner, he's very much of the mindset that our laws are too lenient in Prince George's County. And that is the reason why we have repeat offenders. If someone is coming into Save-A-Lot and they have the ability to know when the best time to steal, is they're studying that location like how we study in work, or how we study for the work sessions. So these are not amateurs. These are people who, for the most part, they, they're constant offenders. And so I get the frustration of, as a business owner, these people keep hitting me for $300 in groceries, next week it's 500, the next week it could be 400. It does add up over time. And does it make sense for us to go to the county to ask, or really, I guess it's a state level penalty, that they heighten it so that it deters people from doing it, but not just that, but that we also look at some sort of restorative thing where you, if you're caught, you have to pay this back. But you have to also go through, you know, certain, I want to say therapy, it's not therapy, certain, you know, sessions to deal with the fact that you stole. Almost like when kids do something bad and they get caught, and it's like you have to do penance, you have to do detention or whatever. If we could advocate for something similar, where not only do you pay it back, but it's not so simple. It's just, oh, you get this misdemeanor. But no, this is requiring you to show up and do community service. Or where you stole from, you now have to work for them for free until the hours total, the amount of work or product that you stole. I mean, I don't know, I don't have all the answers. But I'm just wondering, Chief, from your perspective, what, what could we do to make this tougher?
So what you described him as, like restitution. So they would have to pay restitution back to the merchant. So working with our merchants, as well as working with the court system, we could do what we call a diversion. Instead of sending them to jail, they pay restitution back to the, and then the court can order them community service hours to pay their debt back to society, to the community. But at the same time, as you stated, look for some other kind of programs that we can help them, i.e., you know, some type of job corps or something, where they can earn a living versus turning into street crime. Because as you described it perfectly, that's what they do. They study these businesses. They are what you call the informal wholesale distributors on the street. So they steal $300 worth of merchandise from these stores, and they go out and get a quarter of that just so they can feed whatever it is they need to take care of drugs, or just earn some extra cash in their pocket. But no, I definitely agree that involving the state legislation into this, and come up with a solution that if they're caught, they're held accountable versus getting probation before judgment, you know, because these store owners, this is their living, this is their livelihood. And merchandise are just walking out the door. And some of these people know it's a slap on the wrist.
A question.
I know in DC, the giant in southeast having the same problem, where he's putting his product behind gates. But I would want to act, in that meeting, was any employees found where they were actually taking things as well? Because that's a big, I mean, that's a big, and some of them, they kind of knew it. So I think that could be a problem as well.
No, you're absolutely right. The internal shrinkage from employees is a piece of the equation. And from the meeting, Councilmember Ivy had, I think that was August 31st, or no, sorry, Wednesday, August 30th, that came up. They know there's an internal problem. And when they catch them, because now they have more cameras, especially at this Save-A-Lot, they're terminated. So they're handling that. But it doesn't stop it. It still continues, because then you hire new people and they think, oh, maybe I can get away with it. And they try it too, in some cases. So definitely, the internal strategy is important. But it sounds like, at least for our constituent with the Save-A-Lot, the external theft is a bigger piece of his challenge. And I do want to acknowledge too, and give credit to our police department, because he did say, compared, and I won't say the jurisdiction, but compared to another municipality within Prince George's County, our police department is the best because they're sitting in the lot, and it's visible, and their presence is noticed. And so I do want to thank you, Chief, for just having the officers, really making sure that they're present in the community, you know, to deter crime as much as possible. But I think you're right, Chief, that if, Ms. Bailey-Hedgepath, if you can help us like reword the proper ask there. Because to Chief's point, when I was looking this up, so a misdemeanor charge for $100 or less, $500 fine and/or 90 days in jail, these folks are stealing hundreds of dollars of merchandise at a time, which totals thousands by the end of a three to four week span. So it's just, this isn't it.
You really don't have that many employees. Sometimes it's just him at the register. So it's a behave, it's a behave. And it's, they, this, so.
And I think it's not. I mean, I think you have to think of this as a wider issue and what the, what the state and what they're going, it's not just, let's say, you know, with Save-A-Lots, we're also thinking about Walmart, and we're thinking about Target. And there is an organized level of organized crime that is starting to take on these things because it's not just the fact that people are selling them individually, they're also selling the stuff online. There's, there's levels to this. And so asking for, giving support to maybe some of the other jurisdictions that may have some of the larger retailers. And if we ever have a larger retailer in our jurisdiction, they would probably want us to be supportive of this. So what we can also do is do, yeah, we'll write up this and do that as an ask with some of the other entities within Prince George's that were on that call. So we can add that.
Yep, that is perfect. And then Boswick House, I think we're good there. Town Hall, we're good there. The trail system, that's fine. I think on everything else, it's pretty straightforward. The big question that our state level legislators want to know is what our budgetary asks are. And so I told Senator Augustine on Saturday, I would get that to him following this meeting. But I think we need to figure out what that dollar amount is that we need in bond bills. And like you said before, Mrs. Bailey-Hedgepath, I would feel more comfortable if we can say, this is what we perceive, this is the plan for it, before we put another ask in front of them. So if you could help us just frame that narrative so we can get the ask over. Because the committees are meeting now.
Right.
And so I just don't want us to miss this window. And then I did want to ask my colleagues if we could consider doing a legislative ask around condo and home association boards. So Delegate Marvin Holmes came out to Parkway Condominiums last year to one of our community meetings. His bill, HB 055, did not pass, but it's about the condo association's repair and rehabilitation funds, authorizing a county or municipality to establish a certain fund for the purpose of providing support for the repair or infrastructure in a community. And it goes on. In talking to him last week, what I said to him is, I think, one, yes, we could designate a piece of the taxes that the homeowners pay to a fund on the municipal level. But frankly, I said, we need money from the state. Knowing the situation at Parkway Condominiums. Knowing the situation at Parkway Condominiums as he does, the town cannot write a check to help them repair. And yes, they need help. And so while we could take some of the taxes that come from the homeowners and set aside a fund for situations like this, the state, if they're passing the law, we need them to help support the funding. I don't think we're going to get it from the county. So, wanted to ask if you would consider, again, just some sort of supporting legislation around condo and homeowner association boards. And then the other ask is on tenant rights because of what we seen, what we saw at Quincy Village. SB 0807 landlord and tenant bill, I don't believe this went forth, but Delegate, I'm sorry, now Senator Alonso Washington proposed this, failure to repair serious and dangerous defects-tenant remedies. And so the idea being is that as tenants, we can actually take our landlord to court because we are paying our rent as our contract agrees or our lease agrees, and they are not providing a safe condition for us to live in. And I think if we had that in place this time last year, we could have really helped over at those apartments. And so the idea being that if we support this, we get it on the books as a passed law next year after the session, and we can prevent this from occurring because we have so many apartment complexes in town. So, again, that is asking for support of tenant rights, and then the previous one for reform for condo and homeowner association boards.
I'm sorry. Yeah, by me working for a management company, I can see putting that in place 100. Putting that in, especially for property. I mean, that's true, but I really wish we could use a little upper funds. I'm just saying to help them out, just a little bit, not a lot, but just a little bit, to help them get back on their feet because that place is bad.
Yeah, and they are trying, so I think it's definitely something we could talk about.
I really think we could do something for them, just a little something one time because they need it.
Thank you, Councilmember Blunt. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor James. With the, it's interesting with the reform around the condo homes and association boards, and I definitely think that there's a lot of improvement that can be done. But I know, because I do live in a condominium, and I mean, we do have insurance and, you know, certain things in place so that, you know, to help mitigate some of those things. So, it would just be kind of interesting to see how that's formulated, you know, to help with that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I appreciate too, you have good leadership on your board and at another property in town, that wasn't the case. And so the money, which we learned in work too, was not going to the regular repairs. And now we're at a point of disrepair, but yet people still have to live there. And so the idea is, in the future, should something like this happen, which we hope it doesn't, at least there's funding that is set aside to help in those specific instances. And we're not talking every little thing like, oh, the tenants need new sinks, oh, no. New faucet, new handle for the closet. This is major repairs that without them put the safety of the residents in danger, so.
There was no fault to the residents, actually, because the landlord who put them in that situation and just to help them do their house.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Blunt. So, that concludes the discussion on the town's legislative priorities documents, and appreciate everyone sharing input there. The next item under new business is review of agenda items for regular sessions. So, we'll turn it over to TA Bailey Hedgesmith for that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council. So, I just wanted to go through things that are on the regular council item from, on the regular council meeting that'll be in the next 30 minutes. So, just to give you a quick overview of a couple items in the financial business section. We have a request for reallocation of funding to make a donation to the Blainsburg Volunteer Fire Department to purchase a vehicle. The fire department will be here at 7 o'clock to discuss that, to discuss their specific needs, so I will defer to them on that one. The second item B is a request for reallocation of ARPA business fund to a town beautification team that will concentrate on the commercial corridor. We currently have over $460,000 of the $500,000 left in our ARPA business section. And Vito's nodding his head so that I'm not completely off, but that we do not think that we will expend at giving $3,000 grants at a time to businesses because we're just not getting those requests in. So, what we would like to propose, and there is, I'll make a presentation as part of the next agenda, but a beautification team that would help to clean up our commercial corridors and give our public works team some temporary help that would allow us to hire staff, hire local staff, local people to work for the public works and at about 25 to 30 hours a week for approximately four to six weeks each session, once in the fall and also in the spring, so that we can start off right for those two things. And I've attached a copy of a job description for that position. With the funding, we should probably be able to do four to five, but I'm being conservative to say three to four people based on those number of hours. Number C is to designate the speed camera proceeds for a special assignment team for the Blainsburg Police Department, not to exceed an amount of $510,000 in fiscal year 2024. Chief, I'm going to let you just kind of give a quick overview on that since you're right down the table from me. Chief Collington?
All right, thank you. So, in 2022, 2023, there's been uptick in violent crimes occurring within the town of Blainsburg. That include but not limited to homicide, robberies, carjackings, shootings, assaults, and auto thefts that require more than just the daily efforts of uniformed officers to identify, locate, and arrest individuals responsible for committing crimes against residents and property. Many of these crimes are being committed by the same group of individuals who may not reside within the town of Blainsburg. The police department is the primary law enforcement entity in the town and has the responsibility of reducing crime in town. I am seeking approval from the town council to increase our staffing level from 28 to 31, which would include assigning three current officers to the special assignment team, and we will hire three new officers to backfill those positions. Cost of fund, the funding, three officers will come from the speed camera program as was mentioned by town administrator. The cost is included in your council packet. The goal of creating this program is to enhance our ability to reduce crime in Blainsburg by allowing plainclothes SAT team officers to saturate areas where there's a high probability that criminals are targeting residents for the purposes of committing violent crimes as mentioned above. Our current staffing level does not allow the opportunity for patrol officers to spend long hours conducting surveillance. Details focused on developing leads, important to identifying and arresting, prosecuting individuals responsible for committing crime within the town. Mostly all primary law enforcement agencies have a special assignment team who have the ability to work overtly within areas where there's an increase in crime. Within the town of Blainsburg, the special assignment team will be responsible for working shoplift centers during peak holiday seasons when commercial robberies increase in, within the community. The SAT units will work closely with our criminal investigation division investigators. The duties of the SAT units will consist of working in a plainclothes capacity, operating unmarked covert vehicles, interviewing witnesses and suspects, collaborating with other law enforcement agencies to compare notes and exchange intel, developing leads and criminal cases that link these suspects to crime that occur within town and surrounding jurisdiction. Applying for and executing arrest warrants as well as search warrants, preparing case files for the state's attorney's office for criminal prosecution. Additionally, responsibilities for the SAT units will be the lead, will be the lead investigating team in cases within the town of Blainsburg. In closing, I would like to reiterate that there's a crucial need to add, to add units to the Blainsburg Police Department to enhance our ability to utilize officers who can saturate and focus on identifying, arresting, and prosecution of individuals committing criminal activities within the town of Blainsburg. Our patrol officers have the responsibilities of traffic enforcement, providing uniformed police services, which would not be the same as working covertly. And I just want, would like to add, it's not in this proposal, but I would like to say, part of my vision when I came here and speaking with the elected officials and the town administrator, we are moving this police department into 21st century. So, as crime is upticking, as these crimes that I stated with these carjackings, these shootings, we have to have plainclothes vision because if you look and if you put your mind into the perspective of a criminal, if I see a car coming down the street, just say police on the side, I'll duck or I'll stop doing what I'm doing until they pass. After that, I'll continue to effect my crime. But with this plainclothes, we can set them in the area, they can spend hours just saturating the area and making sure that residents are safe. But they're doing this covertly as opposed to being in a marked unit. And I'm, you know, based on my experience, this will reduce the level of crime in the town.
And Mayor, Council, just for one more thing is that when I asked for the FY not to exceed $510,000, that includes $180,000 in vehicles for the three officers, and so that the overall staffing cost is about $288,796 for three quarters of the year and has an ongoing cost to the town of $385,000 after this first year. So, it's high the first year because we're adding the uniforms, the equipment, and the radios. And so I just wanted to make that differentiation because I know that sounds like a big number, and I want it, and that there's a, there's support as part of the item that has the breakdown of the numbers. And I'd like to thank Mr. Tenelli for putting those numbers together for us tonight so that we had those to look at as well. But I just wanted to kind of also give that support to the chief so it wasn't just the fact that we're asking for $510,000 and that's going to be a yearly cost. We estimate that that would be closer to $385,301 per year.
And then just to clarify, so the 385 annually is the anticipated ongoing cost. But I think the $288,917 for the breakdown of the positions, the three positions, is that number just the three quarters of the year?
Correct.
Okay, so for a full year, then that means we need to estimate that upwards, right?
Which is 385,301.
Okay, got it.
So, that's why we, that's why, yeah, so that's why you have what it's for the 385, 301 is the estimate for the full year.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And I could just say one more piece. And I just want to make sure for clarification purposes for the council and community to know that with our speed camera program, we can only keep a tenth, one tenth of our operating budget amount. So, what we don't spend goes back to the state. So, I would like us to see the money stay here in Blainsburg because with that, the money can only be spent for public safety. So, instead of giving the money back to the state, I would like to keep that money within the town so we can keep our residents safe.
Mr. Tenelli, what is our current public safety budget in total?
It is just over... It's coming up right now.
Just so that you have an idea what that number is, how much you can hold on to if you had to 10%?
Safety budget for FY is 24 and is just over 5 million.
So, for, specifically for the speed camera money, if we took in a million, then theoretically, we can only keep 100,000 of that, right, 10%?
Or is it 10, up to 10%?
It's the town's operating budget.
Oh, the town's full budget, oh.
It's just over 11 million, including ARPA and the speed, well, including ARPA and speed camera. So, you know, you got to play around with that a little bit there. It might be around nine and a, nine and, yeah, about nine and a half million without the speed camera, off the top of my head.
Yeah, I was, I was calculating it to say, whatever you budgeted for your, for your police department, 10% of that could be, could be what you could keep in your-
I want to check the regs on that.
Yeah, so we'll check the regs. But I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of how much, and also from the standpoint of the scale that you're adding this unit, it's right now less than, you know, it's less than 5% add for you to your existing public safety budget. So, it's not that we're adding, this is adding, you know, about 5% to 7% to your public safety budget this year. So, that's more why I asked that question so that you could see as a perspective of what the services you're getting and for the add that you're doing.
Makes sense. And then, Chief, do you happen to know when the spend down has to be completed by? So, since that revenue, well, the program started last year in August or September?
It's calendar year.
Calendar year? Okay, so it has to be spent down by December 31st, basically, okay.
We have a couple items, so I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
Wait, Chief, we should be fine. We have, we'll spend it, we'll make the target.
I have, actually, I have two questions. Are you still, I'm just going to ask the question, are we still thinking about leops for the residents?
I think that that's something that the council will have to give us some direction on. And I think that's something that, since we're going to be talking about compensation, overall compensation in the full session, I'd like to be able to discuss that with the council in regards to what's the, what's your overall spending.
Okay, and the second question, yeah, Chief, I, I am in, I mean, I'm, you didn't answer a vote yet, in support of the more officers because now I'm speaking on a resident services level. A lot of times when the officers come up to Emerson House, I don't know what they do at other buildings, they don't do reports, which it doesn't help us to help our residents apply by our rules and our regulations. And because they're seniors, and I understand, they're seniors and they want to get them benefit of the doubt, but you can't because a couple issues happened that shouldn't have, they shouldn't have let go. I understand. And I also would like to see some of your officers, if you can put something in training, get some training on dementia and odd timers. Because they need that, so they know the difference in what's harmful when it comes to dementia and odd timers and what to let go because you have violent, they're starting to talk more about people who become more violent with odd timers, and it's real. And I really would love to see them take a training in that to help them do their jobs when they come to a senior building or up against anybody dealing with dementia or odd timers. That was just on a resident service-
Thank you, Councilmember Blunt. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's, you know, it's just, it's a shame that, I mean, there's crime all over and to see the uptick in crime in Blainsburg, that we have to even look at special task force units coming into our neighborhoods, especially within our one mile radius, so. Definitely, definitely in support, but then also just looking at sustainability, you know, over, 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 over the years. How does that, how does that look for, for the program? If it's, if the funding is, are we looking, we're looking for the funding, for it to be funded through the camera program, right? Speed camera program?
At least for the first few years, what I would say that Councilwoman is, we do, myself and Mr. Tenelli are looking at the long-term sustainability of this probably moving into your baseline budget because as it becomes a actual function, the speed camera will subsidize it for the first few years. But we need to make sure that as you roll forward, that these, if these are services that are part of the police force, that they become part of your baseline budget, that we can use speed line, speed cameras to subsidize, subsidize positions. But if there is a drop in speed or red light cameras, that these are, you know, these are things that you'll have to consider and think about. So, we're very, we're very, we try to be as prudent as we can with these funds and try to do more one-time costs. But this is the, this is the only positions that I'm recommending at this point to add to the speed camera for the next few years. But it would be my desire within two years to then include as part of the baseline because I'm saying again, this is 3% to 5% of your, your force. So, yeah, that's how, and move more one-time costs to the speed camera fund.
And I don't know, maybe over two, the one to two year period, period of whatever, crime will decrease and go down.
Once you, once you wind this up, it's hard to wind it back. So I, I am going to say it's not, it's not going to be as easy to wind back people. But I understand where the chief is coming from, and I understand that as this unit, as this police department evolves, and I won't say grow, but evolves and has, as crime evolves, there's going to be different tasks that we're doing. So we'll be very serious at looking at how we're responding and making sure that is the case. I'm always going to be prudent about, you know, long-term costs for the town. So I just, but at, but at this point, the speed camera money and the funds look like it will, it will sustain this for the next two to three years, and these costs will be on there. But my recommendation moving forward is not as many positions to be funded by speed camera specifically for it to stay at a one-time cost. And I think the chief will have enough one-time costs that we will be able to exhaust it, exhaust our, our minimums in this way. But I would say one-time cost would be the way that we'd do that for, moving forward.
And then just with the same concern though, on the sustainability, Chief and Town Administrator, would it be possible with the three positions, I understand why you need the sergeant there as well as the corporal, but I know there are certain instances where, say, an officer is still in reserves, so they can't work full-time to help us so we're not having to pay benefits. Could we consider part-time officer positions versus taking on all three FTEs? Or is there a problem with going that way?
I will defer to the chief, but I believe that's not, not the preferable method, Chief. Is that your?
Yes, I, I definitely agree with the town administrator. I don't recommend that, and the reason being, you're talking about this training. We want to make sure, like, if you get these reserve officers, they can leave tomorrow and there goes your, your training. But when you build the team, they gain experience, they gain intelligence, they gain a network of investigators. So if you develop this team, you're developing a cohesive team that work together, that can go out and do the job versus having transient type, if you will, officers, they're temporary officers that, one, building a case file. And I would say I spent almost 13 years as an investigator. Our work sat as well coming up through the ranks. And I can tell you that some of the cases that we, we developed and informants that we developed, you couldn't do that with a reserve corps because you would just lose the credibility of that unit.
Yeah, that definitely makes sense. I was just thinking back to when there was an excellent officer that we had, and he didn't want to leave, but unfortunately, the chief at the time would not allow him to do part-time. And there are some great officers out there, so, but I totally understand the point.
But Mayor, I do agree with the reserve for the patrol side. Now, they, they can always assist.
Okay.
But when you're building a core unit, you want to make sure that it is cohesive. And that entails the training and just building that network of investigators around you, informants, things like that.
Yeah, definitely understand.
And then, Mayor, I see, and as you say, I mean, it's still looking at the sustainability even because as we live in town, we, we, we all live here in the town of Bladensburg. So we definitely look at the public, public safety. And, and, and on where I live on the other side, yeah, so definitely look at that, looking at the public safety, the sustainability, I think, because we, then that, I mean, we are increasing staff. So that's, that's a concern then with the residents. So, you know, how does that look over the, up, up the road? And, you know, where does that in terms of raising taxes on the homeowners who live here in the town of Bladensburg? Or I don't know if it's annexation or whatever this for the sustainability.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And I know we have 13 minutes left before the next meeting, so did you want to?
I'm going to go quick, I promise. All right, so the last ones are the, it's one-time funding, purchase for public safety equipment. This is again out of the speed camera funds of $175,000 for mobile surveillance trailers. Again, this is the one-time cost, which is what staff is recommending. There are four agreements, there are three agreements on the agenda for, for the council to consider. One is in regards to the, the, our, our, our on-call services for engineering, which we've had with CPJ, which is Charles P. Johnson and Associates. We're asking to allow us to enter in a one-year extension with them without having to put together an RFP. We are going to be doing some immediate work because we got some grant funding, and I really need to be able to call them to do that. And they, and they really didn't get to utilize that contract in the pandemic. The second is for, to execute a contract with High Street Strategies because they, they have, they submitted a satisfactory proposal, which I've attached, for the economic development consultant. Lastly is the approval of Monarch Ball of Butterfly for grant writing services. And they also submitted a satisfactory, which, not more than satisfactory, both of them, very good proposals for services. The last one is the approval of the legislative agenda, which we spoke about today, and then chat staff will be making their presentations. But in regards to the two other contracts, these are on-call contracts, and services will be used as needed. I believe with the contractual for the economic development, it is 30, it has an overall cost of 35,000, but the grant is on demand by how much the cap, the, that we use them. And I think that's it that I have. And I, I know the fire chief is here for our seven.
Great. So that takes us to the end of tonight's work session agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Has to move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Bird McBride. Any discussion or further comments? Very none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, we're adjourned.